Yeah, it hit hard. We were talking about those and you said, give me Rose's.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our January 21st, 2025 York City Council meeting. At this time, we will have our public comments section, and I believe we have Mr. Manuel Gomez up first.
Manuel Gomez, City of York, always a pleasure and a privilege to be here. Given the recent developments, and now that we have some pen put to paper, and it's moved out of the realm of conjecture, I have to ask two questions based off recent events. We know we had the failure of the Trust Act to pass, but we still have a standing executive order in the City of York. That executive order does not prohibit the cooperation, voluntary, of course, with ICE demands and ICE officials, or with information sharing practices with the federal government writ large. Of course, when it comes to immigration and that executive order, it's a good one. I wasn't residing in York when it was passed, but it's a fair executive order where it isn't strong as in technicalities. Because it doesn't prevent us locally from cooperating with ICE, the first question I have is, take a scenario where we have license plate scanners. Every single law enforcement agencies, when they use these license plate scanners, load NCIC databases. With these hits may come what they call immigration violator files. I did have some brief discussion with the Commissioner, and it is, as I understood it, we treat those as information only. And I take it as confirmation, my brief conversation with the Commissioner today, that that's current policy within the department. Have never seen it in writing. I would like it to be in writing. If it's information only, that brings us to the other side of the construct. While some of the ideas and even the personalities, but we'll focus more on the ideas, are repugnant, they're still very savvy. The talk now is that they will incentivize local police departments and local governments to give up their autonomy and cooperate. They can't compel us. They can't commandeer the local body to do what the federal government says. It's the federal government's jurisdiction and responsibility to enforce immigration laws. But they can't incentivize you. I would like to know what's the Mayor's Office position, as well as City Council, and even the Police Department? What are your various stances when it comes to the proposition of being incentivized as bounty hunters for ICE, for the federal government? They can't compel you. But we know here, Cassius King, we've heard talk of being pushed from a fiscal cliff and so on. Not likely. What is likely is a short pause or momentary lapse in your justice assistance grants from the Office of Justice programs. Those are very likely. You should be very familiar with them. We vote to appropriate those funds yearly, often, throughout the budget process. You may see those interrupted, but you sort of have to see those the way you would see other political wins. Sometimes one administration favors infrastructure, one might favor art. Philosophies vary. You may see certain grants incentivize your cooperation with the federal government. I would like to see it on the record that we answer, what is our official stance with regard to that potential incentivization? Do we hold fast? And are we actually going to protect and abide by freedom and simply let the federal government do its thing without lifting a finger, not to oppose, but also not to assist? Or will we voluntarily become those bounty hunters for the federal government if the dollar so compels us?
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Is there any other public comment this evening?
Yes, sir.
Michael Walker, York City. First of all, Happy New Year's to everyone here, and to Madam President, and to the hard-stopped Madam Council Members. I don't want to belabor this any longer outside of what Manuel Gomez just illustriously stated. My question, and I wanted to address a few of the misconceptions that were stated at the City Council meeting a few weeks ago from our new neighbors from Texas, claiming becoming a sanctuary city will increase crime. But the data tells in this city a different story. And I just want to admonish before lecturing us, the community that in this very room is represented generationally, that has worked tirelessly tirelessly to sustain it and build its foundation. York has welcomed thousands, thousands of immigrants under temporary status over the last two to three years. Hardworking people who have brought their dreams, their labor, their families. And during that time, crime has gone down. Commissioner? And this is not due to past and present council, Mayor Helfrich, and our Chiefs, specifically our Chief Modrow, but to the community leaders, faith-based organizations, and well-meaning individuals who set examples of compassion and leadership every single day. These are the people in this community who strengthened the fabric of York, proving that diversity and safety are not opposite, they are partners. The numbers don't lie, but fear does. Secondly, I want to address impact of the recent executive orders. President Trump's executive orders targeting birthright citizenship and ramping up ICE raids don't just harm undocumented immigrants. They threaten legal immigrants, and these were temporary sta-- and those were temporary status who call York home. Are we ready to protect them? Are we prepared for the illegal targeting of families in our cities? And doing nothing is not a good option. For point number three, I want to ask every candidate that's running for office this year, what is your plan? What is your stance? The political season might not officially start for another 30 to 60 days, but the people of York need to know your answers now. Will you protect these immigrant families that make this city stronger, or will you stand by and allow fear and federal overreach dictate your actions? And the last part is going to get me in trouble specifically. Lastly, I want to address the silence from certain faith-based organizations in this city. A few months ago, we watched as one man publicly used one of the most, or privately used one of the most vile racial slurs in this country's history. And that issue was addressed publicly and privately. But now I have to ask, where are you when the least of these, our immigrant neighbors need you? Not asking you to pick sides politically, but I'm asking you to live out the values you preach. Where is your intervention for those who need true disciples of Jesus Christ to show up for them? If you claim to follow the one who was assassinated for challenging the powers of his time, then this is the moment for you to lead by example. City Council just urged you to revisit this bill. If it needs to go into committee, refine it, but don't stop. And Mayor, we're asking you, if you mean what you say for this community, please work with the community, work with City Council, and let's get something in place. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Are there any other public comments this evening? Okay. At this time, we will call our legislative meeting to order. It is 6:09 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
John Esquie.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Buckingham.
Here.
Washington.
Here. And now for all that can stand, may we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I. Pledge of Allegiance to the side of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, we will take action on previous meeting minutes. I make a motion to approve our meeting minutes of January 7th, 2025.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? And that moves forward. At this time, we will present a proclamation proclaiming January 2025 as National Poverty Awareness Month in the City of York, to be received by Robin Roeball, CEO of the Community Progress Council. We'll read it, and then if you want to add some comments afterwards, we would love that.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oh, no, you're fine. Whereas National Poverty Awareness Month observed annually in January called attention to the impact of poverty in the United States. And whereas in 2024, 24.55% of York City residents and 12% of children in York County live below the poverty, federal poverty line, struggling to access essential resources such as food, clothing, and shelter. Whereas National Poverty Awareness Month provides an opportunity to spotlight Community Progress Council's leadership and unwavering commitment to breaking the cycle of poverty by empowering individuals and families on their journey toward long-term economic stability. And whereas Community Progress Council understands that beyond federal poverty measures, nearly two in three people in York City live below the self-sufficiency standard, struggling to make ends meet and achieve their financial goals. Whereas through integrated services and a whole-family approach to coaching, Community Progress Council provides critical support to nearly 14,000 people last year in York County, laying the foundation for healthier, more stable futures. And whereas as the leading provider of services for low-income families and children under five, Community Progress Council plays a pivotal role in interrupting cycles of generational poverty through integrated results-driven services. And whereas families engaged in intensive coaching through Community Progress Council last year achieved measurable progress towards economic independence, with an average wage income increase of $6,060, highlighting Community Progress Council's ability to deliver sustained, life-changing results. And whereas Community Progress Council remains steadfast in its mission to provide York County residents with the tools to achieve self-sufficiency, reducing dependence on public assistance, and fostering opportunities for reinvestment within the community. And whereas National Poverty Awareness Month is a time to recognize that poverty affects us all, and that by investing in families, we are building a stronger, more equitable community for York's County's future. And it has been signed by myself, but it's in representation of all of us on York City Council, that we do proclaim January 2025 as National Poverty Awareness Month here in the City of York, Pennsylvania. And we do recognize the impact that Community Progress Council in the York community, and invite all of the residents of the City of York, Pennsylvania, to support the critical work of Community Progress Council in raising awareness, empowering families, and helping to end poverty in our community. Thank you all for all the great work you do in our community. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you as well. You've been very generous to us over the years, and I've been here recently pleading your help, financial help, and you stepped forward with that. So thank you very much. January is Poverty Awareness Month. I come here every January so that we can talk to the residents of York City and any viewers that are watching this evening. Our mission, as you said, is to empower people to move towards financial self-sufficiency. We don't talk about poverty in our mission statement because poverty is very, very low-income. These are folks who are struggling to make ends meet. They're struggling to keep a roof over their head. Self-sufficiency is someone who is, and poverty is working people, but people in self-- below the self-sufficiency standard are working. They are trying to make ends meet and can't do it from one month to the next without tapping into some kind of public or private assistance. At Community Progress Council, we don't believe that that's a bad thing because you need to ask for help. We believe that people want to set their own destiny. They want to make their own future. And so when people come to us and say that they would like to achieve self-sufficiency, we partner with them on the goals that they set for themselves. And we talk to them about the fact that they have all the skills they need to get out of poverty, to get to self-sufficiency and beyond. And we put together a comprehensive array of services that are wrapped around that child and that family to move them forward. We assign them to a coach who partners one-on-one with them, to mentor them, to challenge them, to motivate them, and most importantly, to cheer them on and help them see the small successes that they're making along the way. Community Progress Council is celebrating its 60th anniversary this year. We're super proud of that. So yeah, we have had a lot of success. About 60 to 65% of the 14,000 people that you mentioned are York City residents. And I've been asked by folks when I make this speech, so what is it that you really want people to know? And I think the thing that I really want folks to know is that there is hope. And I believe after spending years of talking to folks who struggle every day to find a roof for their head and food for their children's bellies, that that is so demoralizing that I think that people begin to believe that there is no hope and there's no other way to live but hand-to-mouth. And I'm here to tell you that every single day at Community Progress Council, we see people succeed. We see people make progress, and we see people get out of poverty and up to and beyond self-sufficiency. So if I could say anything today, I would say to folks, come on down. Come on down and ask for what you need. Ask for what you don't think is possible, and let us work with you to see if we can't make that happen. We appreciate City Council's partnership on this. The building looks beautiful, lit in orange in recognition of CPC and Poverty Awareness Month. Thank you to Betsy Buckingham as a board member, and Jenna Jansen is also here from our Board of Directors this evening. So thank you all for your support and your ongoing motivation to us to keep us moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Brett, did you get that folder?
Yeah, but I'll talk to you after.
Did I mess it up?
No, you did.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Council members. Thank you, Community Progress Council. At this time, our meetings that are scheduled, Council Committee meeting scheduled for Wednesday, January 29th at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. Agenda items are due by 12 noon on January 22nd. Our next legislative meeting for Council will be held Tuesday, February 7th, 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. And all agenda items are due by 12 noon on January 29th. At this time, we will move forward with our agenda this evening. Up first, we have Resolution Number Four. So introduced, oh, we can--
I'll go ahead and read, and then you can make a, we'll give a second, and then you can make a motion. Okay. Resolution Number Four, introduced by Teresa Johnescue. Be it resolved, that Council hereby approves the certificates of appropriateness as recommended by HARB for the application filed for work at 215 South George Street and 113 South Pine Street.
So, second?
Second.
I'd like to motion to amend this, to add a third property. We should amend and add three application file for work to be done at 200 West Market Street.
Second.
So before we go beyond that, is that, so we can't amend the agenda unless there's certain, there's new consideration of the Sunshine Act, we can't amend the agenda to--
But on the minutes, there's a clickable link where it's actually already included that is approved.
And that was my question, is if we're just, we're just correcting--
Right, that it was omitted, yeah, from, but it's included as part of the attachment.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve, including 200 West Market Street, that was omitted from a resolution error. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no.
Yes.
Okay. So the resolution has been, the motion has been approved. Is there any discussion on Resolution Number Four?
I have none.
Anything from the administration or the public? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Bub?
Yes.
Johnescue?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes. And that moves forward. Up next, we have a final passage of Bill Number One.
So introduced.
Bill Number One, which was introduced by Felicia Dennis at the January 7th meeting of Council, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget for Parks and Recreation by appropriating an additional revenue and expenditures for maintenance, repairs, and improvements to the city's war monuments and sculptures in the amount of $10,097.72. And that was a multiple grants awarded from York County Community Foundation, the Wolf Center.
Is there any council comment regarding this?
I would just like to thank York County Community Foundation. You know, this is a very meaningful donation. It helps us to maintain, you know, these monuments. And it also, you know, every time we receive a grant like this, it takes money, it allows us to keep money in our city budget for other uses. So it's greatly appreciated that we get this community support.
Thank you. Any other council comment?
Just a quick question for the business administrator. Thank you for the accounts in here. Do they, are they new accounts then that you created for this?
Yes. This is a specific new cause center for this, this grant funding.
Thank you.
Any other council comment? Any public comment regarding this matter? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Okay. Okay. Bub?
Yes.
Johnescue?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes. And that moves forward. Our introduction of the business. Up next, we have Resolution Number Five. So introduced.
Resolution Number Five, introduced by Betsy Buckingham. Is there a motion to introduce by short title?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution Number Five, a resolution adopting New York County 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Just to clarify, that's the 2025 Hazard Mitigation--
Oh, did I say 2024? Okay, let me change that on the--
It is 2024.
It is 2025. I think you just said it wrong.
Oh, I have it. My short title has 2024, so I'll change that to 2025.
Wait, I believe it is 2024.
Is it 2024?
When you go to the website, it's, but it's online--
New York County 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Okay, it's 2024.
And so it should say 2025 throughout?
Yeah, because the--
Throughout the entire document.
24 throughout the resolution.
Uh huh.
You wanted to, yeah. That's okay. Okay. Is there a motion to amend, to change 2024 to 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, the, just on the website, it is the 2024 plan that was approved in November of 2024, but it's good for five years. So I think you're correct with it being labeled.
2024?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Forget that.
Motion is removed from the table.
Okay.
So it is 2024.
It is 2024.
And not just have it wrong on the agenda, which is simple enough. Okay.
Good for five years?
Yep. Good for a period of time.
And move to approve. Second. Has been moved and seconded. Is there any other council comment regarding this matter? Any public comment? I know we have Mr. Shannon. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
I, briefly, it's amazing. It looks good. Go to the website. Check it out. There's a lot of information in there, and it's nice to know that you're trying to cover all the bases, so.
Okay. Bub?
Yes.
Johnescue?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes. And that moves forward. Up next, we are Resolution Number Six. So introduced.
I can't keep up with you guys today. Moving along.
We don't have to do that fast.
Okay, all right. All right. Resolution Number Six, introduced by Betsy Buckingham. Okay, and that is authorizing the filing of a proposal for funds for a grant in the amount of $100,700 for the Green Light Grove Grant through PennDOT with a 20% local match of $20,140 to upgrade equipment in the control cabinets for U.S. Route 30 intersections.
Move to approve. Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this?
I would like to ask, who is writing the grant?
This is less of a formal grant as it's an application process. So the Public Works Administration team are the ones who have already been working its stages. They've already had, like, the proposal is already with the state before the actual application process. So they've been the ones that have been, have been submitting the details about the project. But just a little detail to it is that we were informed that the cabinets are, well, we were already aware that the cabinets are end of life, and we had already budgeted for over $4,000 for us to kind of do the bare minimum of what needed to be done in the 25 budget. And then this grant came up, and they were like, okay, well, now we can do more than the bare minimum and have ourselves covered in these intersections. Because what we were actually doing is that we have a cooperative agreement with the other neighboring municipalities to cover the expenses with the, those intersections lights. And so we had already had our share in there. But now, if we can get the grant to cover the full amount, we can actually get them completely updated and upgraded, and it will cost us less, half of what we had actually budgeted. So that's what we're shooting for.
And so do we use part of that as our match?
Yep.
That's what I assumed.
Yep. So it's already in the budget essentially directly for the cost of this project.
Thank you. Any other council comment? Any public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Bub?
Yes.
Johnescue?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes. And that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number Seven. So introduced.
Okay. Is there a motion to read by short title?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no. Resolution Number Seven, introduced by Queen of Washington, a resolution authorizing the City of York to enter into an agreement with Wagman Construction for pre-construction consulting services and construction management services and an ARPA funding addendum in the amount of $35,000 for seven months of pre-construction services.
Move to approve.
And this was related to the Sylvian Newcom Center, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm going to say. Okay.
Is that a second?
Mm-hmm.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there, I would say, is there council comment regarding this matter?
I would just like to say I'm really excited that this project's moving forward. That that building has been out of use. I know that it will benefit our Police Department and our community.
I, I wasn't around, I wasn't on council when it was approved, and I've been talking to neighbors who do look forward to a community center if, to be there. And they have some ideas about what would be great to go in there. I don't know if there's any flexibility on the plan for it, but I do have input if there is an opportunity to talk about modifying or finalizing how it gets used or--
I would just comment that I believe this is another wonderful opportunity, another great way to show the work and what we utilize our ARPA funding for here in the City of York. Great way to provide another resource to our community, provide a resource not just for our youth, but for our families in our community, for our Police Department, and to bring everyone together in unity for the good of our community and in a good area. And as Council Vice President Bub, I mean, not Bub, Buckingham mentioned, it is-- And as Council Vice President Bub, I mean, not Bub, Buckingham mentioned, it is a good way for us to utilize a space that has been vacant for so many years in our community, and to reestablish that place and beautify it once again, and continue to beautify that area of our city. I know we have Commissioner Maudro and Captain Lentz here, I don't know if you wanted to offer any comments this evening?
Briefly, brief comments.
Brief comments. Brief! Do we need a timer?
I know, right? So I had, I had like an amazing presentation prepared, and then nobody really had any questions, so I'm just gonna hyperspeed that and make sure I answer the one question you did have for me. I just want to say publicly, thank you to Blanda, thank you to council and the administrative team, and also Captain Lentz, who has been serving as my project manager with, through this whole process. Also, because he can't be here today because it's his son's senior night at basketball, I want to actually make sure that we shout out Diaz Woodard, who has been a partner in this journey, who, while he has left the city, and the project had been born while he was still working here, he has so committed himself that he has actually started a business, working with Kim, and had started a business to be able to facilitate this dream coming to fruition. As Council President Washington said, the exciting thing about this, in addition to bringing new life to a building that had been mauled, if you will, for so long, namesake from a person who lived their life to promote recreation and community, the exciting, truly exciting part about this is that it's so much more, it's poised to be so much more than an additional rec center. It's going to be a community center, as previously stated, that's going to be offering so many things to our youth and our families, because as that little girl told us at York High two years ago now, when we were meeting with them, please remember that we're city kids, but we don't all dribble. And that's truly something that we held on to. We remember that our kids do more than, and dream more of, dream of more than just playing basketball on a playground somewhere. So we are looking to use this as an, as a location to provide opportunities and meet our children, our families where they're at, and provide for them on a Maslow's hierarchy level, really meeting their needs, while, yes, they'll be able to lift weights there, yes, they'll be able to play basketball, they are going to get exposure and have opportunities thanks to Diaz Woodard to dance and do theater and do fashion design, and the part that I'm so excited about from my years under Dr. Holmes, the then superintendent of the York City School District, is making sure all the hurdles that keep them from coming to school the following day are met, making sure that they eat in the evening, making sure that they're going to have an opportunity to be able to visit a pantry and get sundries and laundry detergent and soap to be able to take home to their families. And the thing that I'm super excited about, because it was always a dream of Chaz and I, was to be able to provide laundering facilities for them to be able to wash their clothes, because you know, like I know, and you know as a teacher, so many times we've watched students that didn't, that don't come to school the next day just because they don't have clean clothes, and to be able to do those kind of things and provide those opportunities and the ability to pick up a trade and do workforce development, and do it all in a safe location where they're meeting and getting to learn and getting opportunities to socialize with community folks and people from Rotary and our officers, and really be able to build up this community, whether it's providing services or a wedding that's provided, is done there. We're just super excited about being able to do what I think we've proven over the last four and a half years as a police department that we've been able to do now, which is bringing people together and solicit resources. So I'm going to, we're going to continue to do what we do well, is get people's money and get them to open up their wallets, and let Diaz Woodard do what he does best, which is bring people together and provide quality programming that attracts young people and makes them, make them want to come out. And the thing, the caveat, the last part that we're super excited about is understanding that this community is full of talent, with so many nonprofit providers that are able to do amazing things and provide amazing opportunities for our kids, but the fact is, they can't always afford the brick and mortar locations to be able to provide free programming. And that's what, when people say, well, Maudro and Police Department, why are you guys getting into the rec center or community center business? We're not. Diaz is getting into the rec center business, the, all the nonprofit partners, the Cal Wearies, the Cat Rossums, the Laquinn Thompsons, they're, we're gonna let them do what they do, Tavon Parker, we're just gonna give them a free place to be able to come and do it. So we're excited about that, we're excited about what this is going to mean to the community, and we're really pumped with the progress that he's been making with Kim, that we are actually looking at a soft rollout into the York City School District to get our kids excited about the Reprogram brand, even as Blanda continues to build this facility. So I thank you, Ms. Buckingham, I want to let you know, because I've been authorized by President Diaz Woodard, Reprogram actually is an acronym, and it stands for Re-Engaging Persistence Resilience to Overcome Generational Roadblocks and Anticipating Miracles.
And you're gonna text me that, right?
I will te, I, I gotta make sure I can, because that is actually the fictionalized name of this company, so I, I just want to double check and make sure I can, or if you promise just to keep it to yourself, I'll send it to you, but...
You can email it to all of us. Thank you.
Oh god, yeah, I guess, why not? They can watch it later, so, anyway, thank you for, thank you for indulging me and letting us have a couple minutes just to speak about this, because this is truly going to be a life-changing program, and I'm glad we've all been able to play a part in it. When this, this is gonna be a centerpiece, I think, for all of this, for the mayor, for city council, for Kim, myself, Diaz, Blanda, Lentz, our department, this is one of those things that years later, we're all gonna look back on as we go past that sign, and remember that this was a legacy piece that we did, like, like Ms. Washington said, that we did, but we did together. So, thank you again, I'm gonna go sit down before I cry, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Maudro. Is there any other public comment regarding this? Yes, ma'am, answer.
Well, I, I am just so glad to hear about this. Many, many years ago, it was a community center. That wasn't a community center. I did several programs there. I did, the one that I did for several years was Time Out for Mothers. And what happened, there was a fee that they charged city people, and a higher fee that they charged people that weren't in the city. Most of the children who came to the programs were not from the city. So, this is 20 steps forward.
Thank you, Ms. Marie. Mr. Gomez?
Manuel Gomez, City of York. That's in my backyard. I've been watching for years, waiting for it to take fruition, but I gotta tell you, if I could make one simple request, I can't see that neighborhood without seeing Crystal Sexton's face, and what she did with the youth, and when you use the word legacy, and you use the words compassion and just warmth, Crystal, our dear, dear friend, I think we should have something there to honor Crystal. We have Crystal's place, that's really in my backyard, but we should have something there at the Newcomb Center to honor that legacy. I learned a lot from Crystal, what it is to be in York, what York means, how we honor legacies in York, I learned a lot of that from Crystal. A lot of my enduring esteem that I hold for that neighborhood came from people like Crystal and Barb and Uncle Rattleoff, other names that, they didn't have organizations, they didn't have those titles, they didn't seek them. But what I saw them do day to day, day to day, you talk about a testament and an example. If we could do just some of that and carry out some of that legacy, and please, if we could honor Crystal and some of those other folks that were there when the cameras weren't, when the grant funding wasn't there, the appropriations just didn't exist, the time wasn't in our favor. I have some history in that neighborhood myself, not just living there now. I want to see some of that continue, and that bridge from the past to the future.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Bub?
Yes.
John Esq.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Oh, I'm sorry, Washington. I was tape typing your name, and in my mind, that... I was wondering why it was so quiet?
Oh my goodness. Up next, we have Resolution Number Eight.
I believe, so introduced.
Resolution Number Eight is a resolution approving various contracts for insurance services. Move for vote?
Move pro-prove.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment regarding this matter?
Just questions. For the Business Administrator, can you let us know if there's any significant change from previous years for these items? More or less coverage?
No, there is no, no change of coverage. The only thing that we are still looking, to look into a little further, is that there's a separate level of terrorism coverage. We do have coverage built into our liability insurance, but there's a difference between what is by the government labeled as a terrorist act, and then what essentially isn't labeled by the government as a terrorist act, but would be terroristic to us as a group, and so we are looking for that extra level of coverage that we'll be looking to add separately, but that's not included in this at the moment. This is all of the same coverage that we've had before on our same properties and in our vehicles, and it's actually the final, what's interesting with this is that since these are all effective in January, the actual final quotes aren't ready when the budget comes through, so we're working with a broker to estimate, okay? We're looking at a 5% to 10% increase, and that's what I budget for, so I'm always holding my breath when I have the final meeting with them, and they're like, this is what we were able to work on your, you know, work with the insurance companies on your behalf, and this actually comes in slightly under, which is why I'm considering, you know, the additional policies, because we have a bit of room in our budget to cover it and beef us up a little bit in case of those situations. But in general, this is all the same coverage with the same carriers, they were interested in continuing with us, which is always a good thing, and represents what is, is going to cost us in terms of what's already been budgeted this year.
Two more questions. Did we, did we make any claims against any of these insurer, insurance policies in 2024? And who handles making those claims? Is that centralized? I'll roll it all together, are there policy and procedures around making a claim? That's it. So any claims in 2024, who makes them, and are there policy and procedures that everybody knows to follow if they need one, or to determine whether they make one or not?
Well, I mean, this covers our, our police coverage, this is all of our car insurance coverage, this is our property insurance, so yes, we do have claims that came through. This is all ran out of Risk Management, which is a kind of sub-bureau of Human Resources. So if you ever do hear that, you know, a city employee, you, you reach out to them in terms of, you know, maybe a stone flung off of a weed trimmer and hit your car, and, you know, Parks and Rec is like, you've got to call Human Resources, or anything else that comes around, the reason they're doing that is because our Risk, Human Resource Office also handles our Risk Management Office essentially. So what happens is, we have specifically one HR Generalist who's responsible for getting the information for all workers' comp and all of our liability, all these vehicle as well, and for this, we have one central reporting with our broker, Willis Towers Watson, and then they make sure that they send it off to all of the relevant policies and the policyholders so that they can start their process. The Solicitor Flower is involved in that process heavily, but the actual reporting, everyone does know that when it comes to someone making a claim, that they're essentially just supposed to tell them to reach out to Human Resources and give us the contact number overall, and then we know to take the basic information and send it to the insurance companies. We pay them and to rely on them being the ones who actually do the investigating and looking into it and making the determination if we were at fault or not. So there's definitely a process in place that everybody within the city is familiar with, which has kind of been ingrained as time comes along because of making sure that we're always just saying the bare minimum in terms of, you know, you know, what may or may not the city would be at fault for. But that's all ran out of, it sounds weird, but Human Resources.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Bub?
Yes.
John Esq.
Yes.
Dennis? Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. Up next, we have Resolution Number Nine.
So introduced.
Resolution Number Nine, introduced by Betsy Buckingham, excuse me, be it resolved that council, that the agreement between the City of York and the York Public Employees Association affiliate with the Association of Federal State County and Municipal Employees District Council 989 for the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027, inclusive is approved, and the mayor's authorized and the controller is authorized and directed to execute the bargaining agreement for same.
Move approved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council comment or questions regarding this matter?
No.
Is there any public comment or questions? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Bub?
Yes.
John Esq.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Buckingham?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, and that moves forward. At this time, we do not have any requests for any future meetings. Any council comments this evening? I just want to thank our organizations that are providing service all the time, but especially this evening for our unhoused community with our temperatures being so very low, thank you so very much for that, and hopefully in the future, we do not have that challenge in our community, I would hope one day we would not have that challenge in our community, but hopefully we would have today where, you know, if we need more places and more spaces, that organizations are able to open up their doors, whether they're churches or their nonprofits, to provide that service to those who are in need in our community. Is there any administration comment this evening?
I just wanted to give an update to everybody that, just like any new process, we did hit a couple hiccups getting the refuse bills out, but they are, they were sent to the printer the end of last week, and they should be showing up in people's mailboxes shortly, so please make sure that you review them, and there is contact information in terms of the Finance Office, and if there's any questions about the bill, but just a reminder, it is a quarterly bill, so it will be higher, and also, there is a link, we are the very end of tying up the loose ends about being able to pay online, but there is a link, so if you go there initially and you're not able to actually complete the process for payment, please check back up. We're gonna be sending out press releases to, you know, follow up in this process over the next three months in order to make sure that we get it all worked out, but just a reminder that, and there's a whole extra sheet that kind of explains where you have to go, is that we do have the option, since we are using the tax and revenue essentially module from OpenGov, that you can go online in order to set up your account, which will allow you to pay, but also will be able to, for you historically to see your bills over time, and for anybody who is responsible for multiple properties, you can set yourself up as a customer and then tie to the various properties all in one place, so please, when you get your bill, go online, click around, and I appreciate everyone's patience in terms of, you know, just the first time, it's been many moons since the city was responsible for the billing of, of the refus, and... And we were excited about taking it back. And the program that we're using with OpenGov, it's, it's, it's great. So keep an eye out in your mailboxes for them coming up. And if you have any questions, please reach out.
Thank you, Kim.
Kim, is it, so it's correct to say there is no auto payment presently scheduled with these new bills? These new bills will come out. Everybody who was on auto payment will need to actually look at the bill and set themselves up with an auto pay or pay through the web?
Yes, because all of the auto pay was through York Water, and they're not doing our billing anymore. So please pay attention to your bill and make arrangements for payment.
Thanks.
Thank you. It is 6:50 p.m., and our meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone, stay warm.